Hello, good evening and thank you for coming to the May 7 special like meeting. As always, this is a local meeting of the grand like board in public. There is time allowed for public comment. Or rather, if not on it, we see. We're needs is time to complete our business, not in front. And let's remember to be respectful this evening and above. I want to start with a little different thing, you see, this Sunday morning. I was watching TV and I thought to see a team gathered. The Democrat was the leading Democrat in the House, the Republican Democrat, the leader in the public. But he made a few comments about government that I thought. And to the state of Vermont and even to how we are handling things right now here in France. He said, and I'll try to quote best I can, these are challenging ones and people need to come together to find common ground. Governments and all provide safety and security as well as provide necessary infrastructure. Electoral officials need to put these items ahead. I found that was kind of kind of interesting because the team, yeah, pretty good way. You think we all need to come together and do as much as we can to find common ground. So with that, we're going to move on. The next item on our agenda is public comments that I consider not on the agenda. I think we're getting them in the back, but basically I will say what did or what the identity important. But it's major, so this is for anything other than budgeting, but I have discussed that with you guys. Silence, friends, something to do with. Come on up. Well, I still have a question. I had to add where. It's kind of exciting, especially when you get down to business that I was. I'm finding a problem or there's a bunch of my passions that I don't see asked. The budget. When I put that in here, I also had, it hasn't been told, that I also had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that I had to crack into other places on the money. But that will wind out years and people that have, they know who they are. That's all I want to say, like, just. I'm looking back at the decade. Some of the people I worked with, 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 and said that, thank you. Other people would like to deal with that, and I can just. Okay. Want to discussing the budget divisions. For this, I would like to start with the select board, if I can, first. And the damage and the fair information, do you want to present yourself?
Sure, it's the chair. It did include a one-page memo for budget worksheets. And which is fine to maybe couple of titles. So in the proposal that's for the board to need. There's an attempt to be responsive to concerns that the portability is really defining your concern. Not going to totally. So the, in the proposed budget, as you're looking for tonight. The spending proposed for fiscal year twenty five is exactly the same as the spending proposed twenty five. Minus a half a percent. So again, the proposed plan would spend no more dollars than the current plan which is common work. And in fact, would spend a small percentage, half a percent less dollars than is being set. I remember budgeting, which would be better for us. Then worked on the amount to be raised taxes and select word with a couple of options. The amount to be raised by taxes can also be zero percent higher than it was in the present year. But only if the select board decides to take one hundred, to save two-thirds of the one hundred thousand dollar surplus of the modern district favor project to balance the budget. This would take about sixty nine thousand dollars of the one hundred thousand dollar surplus and only about thirty, thirty one thousand dollars that would then return to the general public balance. Since the fiscal year twenty four budget was drafted in November, December of twenty twenty two, the president has drafted. From that time until March of twenty twenty four. The official Bureau of Labor Statistics inflation calendar said inflation is six five percent. This has to be disregarded and it has to be afforded for the different post budget, I mean, class. The most significant impacts that are recommended in the proposal that you consider time is to remove all giving from the budget, as was the case in fiscal year twenty four. Remove all police vehicle replacement from the budget, as was the case in fiscal year twenty four. And reduce the highway crew from four people to three people by non-filling the union making position. And then have a small discussion about what an extremely tight position to be. A risk of running the deficit, the risk of a non-transparent use of tax to pay our funds on active act whose unbalanced satisfaction. The point of the discipline. Then have a short discussion on the town's fund balance. How in previous years, in an intentional and thoughtful delivery today, the budget workshops have chosen to take from a fund balance to lessen the amount required to be raised by taxes. The fund balance at this moment is trending toward a low limit select for this fund balance policy. And we want to reverse that trend, move the fund balance back toward a healthy and fast fashion position. This is an important thing for getting on this. If you decide to use, you know, the fund balance for the modern district road surplus for some part proportion to get to zero. On the amount to be raised by taxes, it means you will be starting fiscal year twenty six budget workshop in exactly the same position you started in fiscal five workshop, which is for time according to the setting. We did not recommend this to the board. That same budget with level seven or level funded, which is not the same as a level service budget. This same budget can be obtained by proposing an increase of two and a half percent to the amount to be raised by taxes. If you add two and a half percent to the fiscal year twenty four amount to be raised by taxes and take it with a non-pro per taxation, the fiscal twenty five four ratio of the balance of that would be either the fund balance or the surplus of the modern district. And it will allow a full one hundred thousand dollars surplus to be returned to the fund. That's my recommendation to the select board here in consideration.
Thanks for your second one, Eric.
So I have been thinking a lot, I think, that, as I thought about what we could do. I think that I'm really, for anything you want, but I'm really, I mean, there's not really, I mean, I don't think it's a good idea. I think that the idea of taking the PR hard ways so that people don't damage their vehicles is a good idea. I think that funding our police force so that they can do their jobs in a safe way. It's not like it. I, I don't see terms of like any sort of extra money to my mind. And I am open to discussing all this very. That, that's what I've been thinking, that's what I've been thinking. Like, what would I do? My first choice would be in essence, and, and I know that that's probably not a machine, but as I've listened to and read people's opinions. And I think, and we know that we just do from Metro, which is that. You know, we need to be taking care of things and I think that pushing things down the road. Like, if I don't like this problem this year, I would like it last next year. If we're still thinking like, well, you know, we have to make up for spending from reserve, it's taken this year quite honestly. And I think that the town has already run through the issues that for that one year, it's already. And next year, it seems. So I, one thing that I would put on the table, just to lean ourselves off of reserve places I have in mind. At the last, last, I think, I found that sort of taking many in mind. Is to maybe just take forty thousand dollars from those, and that's a way to lean ourselves off of money reserve. So thirty thousand dollars is about one percent increase. So if we can come to zero, we have a hundred thousand dollars that we have to sort of afford without taking it personally. And it seems to me that perhaps one way to sort of lean ourselves off of that more gently, because it's not so sort of older, you approach to lean ourselves off of it, um, well, um, would be maybe considered that. But I think I agree with Tracy, I think that it should be, honestly, like the first year's. We can almost follow what we see happen.
No one else would like to add that we also. In this latest go around. And I guess for picking or not, I hear. My idea on baby at this point. Maybe eighty-five thousand, we've already stated, like, put a hundred thousand dollars on our local option sets. They are out of the basement of the class two road, correct? Maybe yet, cannot yet this year. If we don't get it this year, we're clearly going to tap for next year. Both of the roads that we want to do next year, one of the targets are taken out this year, side on both. And we're just saying both class two roads. So we're ready to get class two match. We already have a twenty percent action, we have a safe base, we have a set of that. So I would personally think that could be possible later of doing a civilian tower in the downtown this year. And through one of those key projects that set the, you know, higher one side. And my idea.
But would you be thinking about putting that, maybe?
It, it could be, I just give it out to somebody else, I guess, because I think that's wrong, and that, that. It's an option. And I also have felt that that's very easy to do it, but I also think it's crazy. And, and the others would say, you know, maybe I can go on. And yeah, when we put it in, we went up so high that, so I guess my feeling is class two, usually every other year somewhere back in the pocket for it. We can apply it for the year, the first time we can, we won't pivot. Can't apply it here, however, if we apply it for two hundred thousand. We already added forty thousand dollars in twenty year, there we get it, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Certainly makes a lot of sense. So I can see it's still a lot of paper every year, every year, everything. Do that, a patch, and hopefully our technicals are needed, get a little bit. It, it's to a discussion point, but I think. If you want, if you want to mention that, if you're feeling.
Yeah, I, I did hear Dr. Koppa, order himself with eighty-five thousand appropriations. I want this, but I'm not going to suggest it. I think I agree that things should be in the budget, because if we have to wait here, get it in there. I think this budget, who would have had to change it? Way the economy is now, we know what things got. This should, this should be a good budget that should pass.
Don't like what I'm saying, but if that's a round number where it makes sense. A lot of checks passed in the face of extreme. We all have one thing. That's very clear. Page, the line height of annual alignment is down forty-five ninety percent. So it's a quarter of a percent lower than last year's. To be raised by taxes number is up two and a half percent. Due to the fact that here we are, bottom down, the to be raised by taxes number by raising a hundred. Responsible to time based on the amount of insurance. And what we see, but when you, when you advertise these numbers, the number that you compare to this year. Or, that's, so what, what we did here, probably. The action. I don't see any other thoughts that we can do that doesn't get into playing publicity and position in the town, right?
Jen, just Jen, I've been wondering, has this had any to do with that? I told you that it might take a, a formative reassess of the people on Zoom here. Switch a couple of the flyers that are sent here, what picture, size of taxes.
Or, or, yes.
Test again, test. Okay. I'm very big. Here, but now we're not getting, not getting the juice here, okay. No, it's recording.
Okay, good, so.
I don't know, I don't know if you can hear me, but it's still, it's just really choppy for us on Zoom. I think we're getting the echo from the speaker, from the speakers and from the mics.
Back. We're, we're back as we're going to be anyway. So I'm gonna, any other discussion on the budget from the select board at this moment?
Yes.
I'd like to make.
Quiet, please.
Okay, is, it's not gonna, okay. Doing my best. Great, okay. I would like to make a motion that we add an eighty-five thousand dollar appropriation because I feel that for paving, reason being that we have determined. We had looked, those roads are in need. They're next in line to be done, and if we don't do it this year, we're kicking it down the road. And I think that the voters should be given the option to not kick that down the road. And. You have to address.
Okay, the only roads that are on the plan to be paved this year is High Pond Road. No, no, High Pond Road was real, North Street from where Ooster used to be down around the corner. That was not paved before, the road is in pretty bad shape and it has to be ground down below level because if they skimmed it again, it would be higher than the sidewalk. So it has to be lower. And the other part of the road would be Union Street to the west or south of, on the other side of the river, out to the end of Union Street. Those are the two paving projects as defined by our Department of Public Works department. So wait a minute, we, we gotta finish this select board discussion and then we're gonna come out there.
So I make a motion that we include eighty-five thousand dollars as an appro, or we make an appro. What, what, I don't know the wording, Tim, can you help me?
Appropriation.
Yeah, that we have an appropriation, we propose an appropriation for eighty-five thousand dollars in an effort to be responsible for the future and avoid deferred maintenance.
Yeah, I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to put eighty-five thousand as appropriation for paving. So the public is totally aware when we say it's for paving, that's the only thing it can be used for. It cannot be used for anything else if it is not spent. It has to actually take a, another vote to clear, to change it to any other, any other use. So what we would be doing is eighty-five thousand dollars from the budget, one hundred thousand dollars from local options tax to complete the paving that we wanted to do this year. We have a motion and a second, discussion from the board. Pardon? Eighty-five thousand is not in the budget that's proposed right now from Seth. It would be an appro, it would be an appropriation, but it, okay, you're right, I said it wrong.
Good catch.
So eighty-five thousand, if it passes as an appropriation and if it fails, then we just do a hundred thousand. So from the board, any other discussions? On this, just this motion, discussion from the public? None heard?
Oh, no.
Yep. If the appropriation passes, what does that do to your tax bill? It would, your tax bill would be up about two and a half percent before that appropriation. If the appropriation passed, it would raise the tax bill approximately another two and a half, two point eight percent. If it fails, then your tax bill doesn't change. Yes? What roads are those?
So there were three, she's wondering what roads the hundred thousand would be going for.
The hundred thousand is going for those, so same two roads. Paving is brutally expensive. The only two roads that are being considered is North Street and Union Street. No other paving is in the budget or is from the appropriation, that's, that's it.
So if we kept the one hundred thousand dollars only as our only paving money, which road gets priority, Seth?
The one hundred thousand dollars would not be sufficient to do Union Street, it would do North Street.
Okay, so if we were to add an eighty, if we suggested an eighty-five thousand dollar appropriation and voters approved it, it passed, then what road would be done additionally?
We would still do North Street, we would do a portion of what was proposed for Union Street, which would most likely be the portion between Twin Oaks Drive and the Damare Farm. The part that's in the worst condition and which is never in sunlight.
Jen.
There's a different way to describe that, which is as. Which as Doug explained a moment ago, our, our number is actually going down. What it's doing is it's allowing the town to be part of the decision about whether to move paving further out on, on, on the schedule. And so that's a legitimate choice. There, there's no smoke and mirrors, this is a, a clear appropriation, that it's defined. People can say whether they want to do it or not.
And it's not the same old budget because we have an open position that we're not filling at the Department of Public Works, the road crew. That is considerable amount of money. We've taken the twenty-four thousand out from replacing another cruiser. We've taken the charging station out. So there's other items that have come out, the appropriation would be separate. And A, we don't know until we vote if it's gonna go in, one more time. And A, we don't know until we vote if it's gonna go in. One more time.
Sure. Um, we're having some questions from Zoom that they'd like to hear what's being discussed. And so um when people need to speak, they need to come to the microphone so that way the people on Zoom will hear.
Okay, I wanna I I I think when you just asked that question, you mentioned that we were talking about cutting the police department and and there's nothing in there about cutting the police department. Well, we're taking out a loan payment on a car because as we've looked at it and talked about it, we have five. We have seven police cars and only two people on duty at any time. But we seem to feel that we have sufficient cars at this point. We're we're asking the police officers to walk around town. Uh Tracy, can can you come back to them? Because when people on Zoom can't hear.
Like so.
What really, what really gets me is that um as Doug said earlier, uh we're looking for safety and we're looking for infrastructure. Um. I've I've sat here and listened to the cuts that have been made here tonight. Um, I think our safety issue was, I believe, is all right with cutting the car out of the thing. But you're taking, you're cutting eighty five thousand dollars out of infrastructure. But what I haven't heard is I haven't heard anything taken off the rec department. Um. Back in the early process of when we started this budget process, I asked for numbers from the rec department as to how many participants there were. Don't hold me to this because I don't have the numbers a hundred percent, but I believe it was fourteen hundred roughly. I asked what the percentage was that were Brandon taxpayers. Alarmingly, forty, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna call it forty percent, forty four percent, I think, was a number that were not Brandon taxpayers. Um, so i- if I just figured at forty percent and the administration cost, not not the program cost, just the administration cost is a hundred thousand dollars. Um. Roughly forty thousand dollars of that that I'm paying, you're paying, we're all paying in taxes is going to put um folks that aren't taxpayers of Brandon that we're paying for their recreation. The other thing is that I've done just thrown a few quick numbers together and they might, they might be wrong. I'm sure they're not a hundred percent. Um, a hundred percent of the people are going to benefit from paving. A hundred percent of the population of Brandon is gonna bene- benefit from paving. If you figure the numbers at fourteen hundred and you figure sixty percent of that, that figures out to be about twenty percent of the population benefits from these programs. So I I just think things a little offsideed there. And I definitely think whether it's done for this budget session or the next one, that you really need to get a hold of something and start coming up with a way that these out of town folks can do it. Because basically what it amounts to is it's it's roughly seventy five dollars uh per capita that it costs at fourteen hundred people. And thank you.
I'm saying new new over here. You got two of you over there. I don't care. You guys fight it out for who's first.
Matt Clauser. Uh. So a few quick things. Yeah, sorry, a few, just a few quick things. Um. I think the idea of uh of throwing the rec department in there, it seems a little ludicrous to me based on the fact that some Brandon residents don't use it opposed to the road situation, which, you know, I don't know what the statistics would be on how many people are driving through town who don't live here. We all have to go all over the place. We all, we all need to use the roads, right? So it seems like a public service, a false equivocation. The the second thing is, I think when we talk about the budget numbers, whether the paving should be in the budget or outside of the budget, we we already as a, we voted to say that we don't want that money in the budget, so we're trying to figure out how we can use the rest of the stuff. That's correct. And then the third thing is, if we don't do the paving this year, whatever paving we don't do next year, do we have an estimate of how much more expensive that's going to be next year or the year after, given price increases and deterioration of the road conditions?
Seth can try.
I would not hazard a guess, but I can say that the general rule of thumb is that nothing is cheaper next year than it is this year. Nothing gets cheaper.
With with the exception that next year, we could possibly have the eighty twenty match. So we wouldn't be paying a hundred percent of it, would would be paying twenty percent of it. This other fellow, did you? Hey. Who's that?
Uh, Chair. Sorry.
Yes, yep, you gotta come up to the speaker. Okay, Bill, go ahead.
Mr. Mr. Chair, would you mind if I spoke? I didn't want to get too far away from Tracy's comments to respond. Um, uh. Tracy, the numbers that I gave to you with the number of individual participants, people that register for things in the town of, that didn't talk about the number of uses. We have many families that do two or three different registrations in one calendar year. That's not included in that fourteen hundred. The vast majority of our registered people are from Brandon. The different number of fourteen hundred different registrants. But we have people that are using it four and five times a year. That's not included in that number. So those numbers aren't necessarily accurate. I wouldn't use those necessarily to do that math. I can work with you to give you numbers that would mostly that would that would closely approximate that. But that's that's just the individual number of different individuals doing things in the town of Brandon register. That doesn't include anybody that shows up for anything that's free. They don't register. They just show up here. That doesn't include anybody. That doesn't include those people. I just want to make sure you know that. And I understand you you've made that point as a selectman and now as a person in the in the public, talking about people out of town paying their fair share. And you were part of the select board that asked and authorized us increasing the amount that people from out of town pay to access rec programming. We added nine dollars to every registration for people from out of town to try and offset some of those administrative costs. And if the rec budget were to be eliminated entirely, that two hundred thousand dollars, I mean, you you could do that as a select board and the effect on the budget would be almost what we just had worked about cutting out. So.
I've got a question for you. So when um when people attend, say, like a rec event, so I'm gonna think of ones that my kids love. So like the Halloween thing at the the park and you know, the trick or treating from the trunk or treat. Um, you're not able to count every head that goes in there. So like we have estimates for things like how many people come to the carnival and how many people go to those, but those wouldn't count as registrations? Is that correct? Okay. Um, and I I also would just caution that or just uh food for thought on on recreation. So I work with kids um in my profession and I have a strong belief that kids are gonna do something. And if you don't give them something good to do, there's a decent chance they are gonna choose something you don't want them to do. And um when I first joined the select, I see people chuckling because they're thinking of things that they have done that they, you know, if they were going to roller skating club, they might not have done. Um, so um I I would just I'm remembering back to when I first joined the select board last year and it was spring and there were kids and they were riding their bikes and we had this big discussion about kids riding their bikes and it's kind of annoying on the sidewalks and sometimes they almost run into people. We need to give them a good option. Like unless we want to have that conversation over and over and over. If you don't give a good option, you know, and and I also think for adults as well, but I I will be very straightforward that, you know, professionally, that's where my my heart lies.
Hey, we're still at the point of discussing this one item of eighty five thousand as an appropriation or not. We're not discussing other items. Go ahead.
Well, it was in relation to what we were just talking about.
Okay.
This budget item. The recreation item that was brought up. That's what I'm responding to.
Go ahead. You're there. You're there. We speak. We we need to stay to that. Yep.
I I am in Brandon. I don't go to any events. Um, that was my choice. I'm very good at entertaining myself. The library is wonderful. The bookstore is wonderful. Walking is wonderful in Vermont. So I don't um uh uh don't have any, I understand the whole keep the kids busy program. I understand that. That's a good thing, you know. If if you don't have them doing something, they're in trouble. But my feeling is adults, they can pay for their own. If they want to go to the movies or they want to go to a concert, they could pay for or save up or because you're picking items for the entire town, but that doesn't include everybody's what do you call it? Style or whatever. But I have paid for years and I haven't said a word. But uh, you know, we all have we've all got the internet, so we're not, and we've all got books. So um, if I, people want bands, that's fine. They can pay for it. But I don't think it should come out of the town budget. That's me.
Uh, Bill Clauser?
So I I'd like us to step back a moment if possible. I I don't know if we're out of order, but the agenda was the budget. And you've introduced another topic of an appropriation. So I'm just checking in to see if I I'll loudly speak to the appropriation, but I'm just wondering if we should take a step back and talk about the budget because I do have a question about the proposal.
Uh, you know, it seems like it's hard to talk about taking the paving out and making an appropriation without getting somewhat out of order. I would really love to finish that one item. Would you mind if I call that question so that we've done that and then? And are you talking, are you want to talk about the paving or about?
Well, I'd like to go back to the purpose of this meeting, which was the budget. And we have a motion to you all to talk about the appropriation, which seems like it should follow after the the main topic, but I I might not be I might be incorrect on that, but I can talk to either one of them. I'm just checking to see if we should move back to the budget and rather than the appropriation, the appropriation has moved to the rec department. And we're kind of like spinning off the main topic, which is to get a budget.
Okay.
So.
I I would like to add the select board note on whether they want to do an appropriation or not, because that's a motion on the floor. And then we can move on and then let me just, Jan, is that what you want to talk about again? Pardon? Come say what you want about paving and then we're calling the question. Then I'll come right to you.
Well, no, I want to talk about paving as well.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
So I would, I would, I would appreciate it if uh Mr. Bailey, what you suggested is a wise course of action as far as you've got taxpayer money. Let's utilize it in the wisest and best way. So we can use, I think you said twenty or forty thousand dollars next year and we can leverage almost a quarter of a million dollars in paving. I appreciate and respect the the call to let the voters decide on the paving. But and you have a tough call here, but I would suggest that let's try to defer that and really pave a lot next year. And if we have to double the amount from the local taxes to achieve four hundred thousand dollars to do all the paving, it's still a better bargain to do that with the ta- taxpayers' money, in my opinion. I hope you consider that as your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
And cool.
Uh, hang on. Once I'm glad Seth.
I I appreciate that sentiment. I just want to point out that the fact that the town might choose to pave something this year entirely funded by the town does not preclude the fact that there will also be paving opportunities in the next year funded at an eighty twenty match. It's it's going to be this way. It's been this way for many, many years. It's really a determination of how much does the select board and does the community want to put toward investing in the roads, right? And on what schedule? I I don't think that the town paving this year is gonna mean that we're gonna pave less next year or that the money will go further next year if there's a grant. We would still be on the hook for everything above two hundred thousand dollars next year. Everything above that number would still be one hundred percent on the town.
Go ahead, Jan.
You don't need an appropriation for paving. You already have the Arnold District Road that credit coming back to the town. Use that paving dollars for this year's, for this budget. That's paving for paving. You don't need appropriations and I hope you don't vote for appropriations.
Okay. Hey, can you?
Seth. Um.
Why not you? Right.
Yeah.
I have to say that I am disappointed with this process as it appears to me. And that is because two meetings ago, after the first budget failed, budget proposal failed, the select board polled the different select people and said, what is your choice to cut the budget? And you came up with five topics that were suitable, in your opinion, for cutting. That budget also failed. And now it seems to me, and I might be wrong, but it seems to me that rather than starting over again, which is what you should be doing, in my opinion, you are going back to those five individual items that were proposed by select people and massaging them to come up with a larger cut. And I think that is a basic fallacy. You can, you can only massage them so far. And it will not accomplish what you want to accomplish. I think my my choice would be to have the Budget Advisory Committee get back together, spend a couple of meetings going over the budget as originally proposed and seeing where there were items that could be cut. There were a lot of anticipated expenses that showed inflation that we had not met in previous budgets. We could take a couple thousand out of this and a couple thousand out of that and come up with a more realistic, basic budget. And then see if we still needed to reduce the 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 total budget by more, look into each of those items or um programs. I'm not picking on rec, but if we don't have roads, we're not gonna have people being able to come from Pittsburgh for recreational activities. I mean, there's there's an interrelatedness that we're missing by picking five items that are not interrelated too much other than being budget items that people had an issue with. And I think we could do better by starting over again and looking at it in a much more analytical way than, well, we can finesse the uh paving and 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 your taxes will stay the same, but the budget will go down. Which doesn't really help anybody. Thank you. You're.
What would you like to?
Yeah, before we we vote this, I uh I want to speak to Tracy's point because it's it's a good one. I um, as Tracy knows, I supported putting the paving back into the budget because I think it belongs there. The the reason that I now support putting the paving paving into appropriation is because clearly the town um didn't want Is because clearly the town um, didn't want the increase that we proposed. Which was um, a reasonable set of requests to fund our town. Um, and so I think this is a way to share the decision-making process. And so I I look forward to the day when we can put. Um, the paving back into the budget. That's all I had to say.
I would, I'll. I'd like to chime in that. Absolutely. My first choice would be to have paving in the budget. I showed that by. Giving my consent to the original two versions of the budget. That said. My second choice is to have paving as an appropriation. And I feel like. It is the responsible thing to do to advocate for our town to spend. What we need to spend to take care of our roads so that they're safe and not damaging people's vehicles. So. If that's an appropriation and that's sort of how it. Filters out, then then I can I can live without my first choice of having it in the budget.
This is a question about budget or about paving. Um, and therefore associated with the appropriation. So. I I literally think I've lost track of something and I just want to be really clear when I vote. Next year, we're talking about applying for matching funds. And spending some money that we can leverage up because of the. It's on, isn't it? Okay, hmm. We're talk, I I think I just heard a discussion about next year. Um, putting in some funds and uh, applying for matching grant from V Trans. And leveraging our town payers funds to do more paving. This year, did I hear correctly that we would be putting in funds that would not be leveraged with matching grant? Can you tell me if we applied for a matching grant this year?
We did.
And it was turned down.
We have not received word yet.
It has not been awarded yet. We applied for all three road projects. On time. The receipts or the. Submissions were receipted by V Trans as being received on time. They're under consideration and the awards will not be made for quite some time.
So at, thank you. That's really, really good. I'm glad we I'm glad we applied. That's fabulous. So if we are voting now for an appropriation for funds to be spent. Um, we don't know. If they're going to be. Able to be matched or they are just or we're just saying. Whatever happens, that eighty five grand we're going to spend flat out. If. I I I don't know if I'm being clear, but um. You know, maybe an eighty five thousand dollar investment if we are waiting until we see it, if we get a match. And and getting that leverage out of it is a different question than, hey, folks, do you want to fund eighty five thousand and you're paying for it all yourself?
Okay, if we we have applied, if we notified that the state that we received. A grant match, we could use the money from our one percent options tax. Which we have already stated we have a plan to spend a hundred thousand. And we probably wouldn't need. The eighty five thousand dollars. We just don't know, assuming we're going to get it one this year. Because they had one last year, correct?
So would the appropriation be written such that? We would appropriate eighty five thousand dollars. Um, to be spent. If there was no match. And be returned. If there was a match, and I don't mean cutting a check to each individual person, but putting. Put somewhere where it could then be spent the following year.
If it was stated in the uh, appropriation that it's for paving, it could only be used for paving. It could be. Used for the match or could be held over, but it could not be used for anything else. So it could be held over to the. Next year, but once an appropriation, that's the only use of the appropriation.
And and just one other thing, um, tracking against budget in fiscal year twenty four. Where are we going to come in? Are we going to come in on, under, or over?
Um. When Seth and I looked at that the other day, uh. We're at the ten month point, which was to be. Eight percent of the budget spent in almost all the departments we have. That numbers looks like we're coming. Right. On the line. It could be a small left over or it could be a small deficit. I don't know. Um.
And the one that's out of whack is rec for right now?
Uh. Well, okay, well, it's not. No. Seth is working with him, but he. But it's not more than a few budgeted. Um, was rec, correct? But also you have to turn back to the page to look at the record revenue, so we're generating. And I like revenues go up substantially. But also, the, so as the rec does, revenue comes in. Expenses go out on all the programs. So can you give us a measure?
Happy to, Mr. Chair. So the um, the recreation. Proposed spending was one hundred and seventy seven thousand. And the actual spending has been one hundred and eighty nine thousand, which means it's at a hundred and six percent of its budget. The recreation revenue. Was forecast at sixty nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty. But it has actually been one hundred and thirty seven thousand, four hundred and eighty five, which is one hundred and ninety seven percent. And and I just, if I could, Mr. Chair, just small follow-up. The other department that's running over on the expense side is Buildings and Grounds. Um, forecast at two hundred twenty five thousand, actually spent two hundred sixty five thousand. Uh, the major. Situation there is the floor in this room. So if you go again back to the revenue side. We had only forecast eleven thousand dollars for revenue for Buildings and Grounds. But between the grants for this floor, including the contribution from the Friends of the Town Hall for this floor. And the insurance settlement uh, for the chimney falling off. Instead of eleven thousand dollars of revenue, we have one hundred fourteen thousand dollars of revenue, which is a thousand and forty three percent over budget.
And and just Seth, these are really great numbers. The one hundred and uh, one hundred and six percent that you quoted. Is that one hundred and six percent? Of eighty two percent that we should have spoken now, or we're at a hundred and six percent? Of the entire year. So we're over for the year in month ten.
For the year in rec in month ten, and we are over for the year in rec revenue by a hundred and ninety seven percent.
Got it.
It's always going to be the case that you're going to run over on revenues when and expenses when more people are participating.
And I was, and I was like, no, they always come here and talk about the department and say, let's cut programs. If we can, they're cutting the programs, or they're cutting the all setting. On the program, the programs. Exceed their expense last year by, was it thirty thousand? Thirteen thousand. So the programs are covering themselves at this point, so. Christian, thanks for speaking here.
Hi, um, I'd like to echo the point of order about putting forth an appropriation. Before the budget discussion has been finished because that that directly. Um, impacts that and also Neil's comments about. Going back to the drawing board and looking at everything rather than just things because. In the budget, excuse me, I have a back today. In the budget committee meetings, there were many comments on a lot of other line items that perhaps could be. Reexamined.
Okay, thank you. So respond to the point of order, essentially the. Motion to propose. Asking for the appropriation article, it's essentially an amendment to the business that you're discussing with the budget. And essentially amendments get taken care of before the main motion gets taken care of. Right?
You also, do you want to vote back questions?
I'm sorry.
Hey, you mean the last, the last speaker before we move this question?
David Claire Stone, resident of Brandon. Um. I feel that this meeting has um, given more clarity. And more respect than any other time we've been together. I don't think we're where we want to be, but I think everybody is. I feel people are making an effort. And I appreciate that because nobody wants all this tension. But money is an issue for everybody, either have it or you don't. And I I need to address. The notion of democracy. This is really important and it's part of the letter. That Mitch Pearl wrote. That there are some agitators. That are able to pay their taxes that are being vocal. And I personally am one of those people. But this is a friggin democracy. My community. Isn't about who has how much money. My community. Is all of the people here. And if I see. That my neighbors are struggling. I am. Kate for them. And. Democracy. And Brian not be admonished, he's part of democracy. He is paying attention to the people coming to him. That are saying, this is going to hurt. People are writing on front porch forum how many more weeks they have to work just to pay for their extra taxes. And I know that one of those people was mortified. As a man to put that in writing. Because we all think our value is about money and it isn't. But I think we're forgetting that here. This is our community regardless of how much money you have in your wallet. If you have a bank account or a credit card. And if that can't be respected, this town is worth nothing. This is a rural community and I thought there were better values. That's why I moved here. All I can say. And Tracy was blind. Every every year, I'm starting to see somebody being scapegoat. Out of this process, y'all got to learn to get along. All of you and respect each other. And I'm still confused about. Something Brian brought up last year, which is how the friggin carnival works. How does it work? I understand, but these are finances. And it's never been clarified. I don't think you're in charge. Thank you. Okay, if they want to call me, they will. They're wearing their pants. So I think that that's something that needs to be clarified because is your budget and all that money really yours? Or is that part of Collins? Volunteer group. Because that was never clarified.
Absolutely not.
Okay, well, there seems to have been no clear books on that. So I'm happy that you have your money. I love recreation, always a part of my life, but that was never cleared. So I thank you and we'll either figure it out or we won't.
That's out of. Order. I'd just like to speak to that. That's all documented within the general ledger, but the funds that have come in and come out for the carnival, it's all there.
Um, time to move to the question. Okay, so we have a motion and a second and a lot of discussion. On whether to have an appropriation for the paving. Uh, eighty five thousand that has. Been removed from the budget, so the taxpayers can say whether they want to pay for it or they don't want to pay for it. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
So it will be. Three, two. It's, it is an appropriation and the voters can vote it down. Accordingly, or up accordingly. Other. Budget revision discussions now. So now it's not limited to just the paving. We can. Let anyone talk about what they feel they would like to see.
I have a question.
Go.
How will um? Are we running the risk by having only three instead of four highway department? Or I'm not calling it three, I think, yeah, you know. Um. By having three people instead of four, are we running the risk of needing to pay overtime and also? So number one, overtime. Number two, can we keep ourselves safe with snow in the winter?
Yes, Seth.
Some questions. So I've spoken at length with the Highway Division Chief. I spoke with him before he was promoted. I spoke with him while he was training under the previous highway foreman. Um, this is Jeremy De Sorta I'm talking about. So. His recommendation, his desire. Uh, even as he was being considered. Was for the town to reaffirm its uh, look at the highway department as being a maintenance crew. Which in the summertime spends its time uh, maintaining ditches and uh. Clearing culverts and doing roadside mowing and all of those things, grading roads, all of those things that we expect them to do, filling potholes. Um. He. Took the position that the highway departments. Two different projects over the last three or four years where they spent most of a work season rebuilding a section of road. Was not the direction he wanted to lead the highway department. He did not believe it was. Working to their strengths and he did not believe that it was um. Conducive to. Good maintenance because while they were rebuilding that section of Town Farm Road, while they were rebuilding that section of the Arnold District Road. Those other maintenance tasks were being basically put off until the next year. So that, so his um. His goal or his vision for the highway department is that it become a maintenance crew and that we hire out. You know, road rebuilding when those things happen. He believes that three people in the summertime and in the fall and the spring is a sufficient. Crew that augmented by the one person who is the whole Buildings and Grounds Department. And they are occasionally augmented by the assistant wastewater operator for certain matters. He does already plan on um, using snowplow drivers in addition to the crew of three. So we have. Three very large snowplow trucks that will be plowing snow with our three permanent full-time highway crew. The other highway trucks that we have clear snow in the winter are smaller sized trucks that he anticipates calling from a list of about four or five. Drivers who the town has called upon with some regularity in past years. Um, he anticipates needing those folks to come in. And work on an ad hoc occasional basis during snowstorms.
So are we running the risk of overtime cancelling out the savings?
I don't expect so. They do move in the summertime from a five-day. Eight-hour day schedule to a four-day, ten-hour day schedule. They do that partly to um. Make it more efficient from bringing their equipment from the highway barn out to the job site and so on and so forth. There's a little bit to be gained there every time. Um, and it does not appear. That. A call that comes in on a Friday is it's, if it comes in on a Friday and it's my road needs to be graded, it's probably going to wait till Monday. It's not like. Summertime emergencies other than floods. You know, if there's an actual public safety thing, the highway crew will be crew, will be called in for an emergency. If that's a federally declared disaster, we will receive reimbursement from FEMA for ninety two and a half percent.
Okay, thank you, Seth.
Uh, all the things I've seen, you got your hand up, so.
So it's a while ago, Seth. I was wondering if you could. Help me reconcile how you got to the two and a half percent increase. Uh, you went through some numbers. I don't know, forty minutes ago or whatever. So uh. My my question is uh. To get to five percent increase, my math uh, with the changes that you incorporated into the most recent budget that was defeated. Uh, there was another hundred and fifty six thousand dollars needed to get to a five percent increase. Um, and if my math is correct, in order to get to a two and a half percent increase, you'd need to. Uh, cut two hundred and fifteen thousand. So I get between the cruiser and the eighty five thousand, that's now an appropriation. That's about a uh, hundred and. My math, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So it's about a hundred thousand dollars that I'm just trying to identify that was reduced in your expenses. Can you, can you run through that?
So um, two things. One, I I. So, um, two things. One, I, I really want to make a, a distinction between this two and a half percent number. That two and a half percent number is an effort at transparency because that's the amount that the amount to be raised by taxes will have to go up to be a zero percent increase in spending. Okay, that's super different from how we have traditionally talked about budgeting. We, the initial budget that failed was a thirteen percent increase in spending and a nineteen percent increase in the amount to be raised by taxes. The second budget that failed cut that thirteen percent increase down to six point three. And it cut the nineteen and a half percent down to ten. So that, that's kind of important. The direct answer to the question is that the other hundred thousand dollars is the highway crew plus benefits, the highway crew person.
So one person, thank you.
At fifty thousand, so it's twenty-five dollars an hour, fifty thousand dollars a year. And the multiplier with FEMA is one point seven five percent. That's what town benefits are. And that's most of the way to that hundred thousand dollars. There were miscellaneous, um, small cuts here and there to various things. I put a couple of notes in the budget, um, worksheet.
Thank you for that. That's a pretty good benefit package, I guess. Uh, so I just couldn't bring myself to think that a hundred thousand dollars, uh, for one position, but thank you, appreciate it.
Other questions on the board?
Where, where?
I just wish you would have started at a lower number instead of putting us through this all. But when you're looking at where you guys started and where you ended up, I just can't even figure out how you could be that far apart. That some of these cuts and whatever that you've come up with misogyny numbers, why none of that came up before? And one of the things that I keep stressing, you know, on the budget committee is you don't plan. And here again, one of your wishes was to get a part-time person in the summer for building and grounds. Now you're cutting a person. It's like there's no rhyme or reason how you can go from here to here. And even though the budget is going to be low at that two point whatever percent, we're pushing too many things down the road. So what are we going to do next year? It's like, we need to be realistic. Because just like when you look at the police vehicle, you're cutting both of them out. We know two of them are over twelve years old or right around there. And they're going to die at some point and you want to get rid of some and go down to five, that's fine. But you need to plan. So if you left twenty-five thousand on the, the police, the capital line for police vehicles, it takes three years to add up to a police vehicle. Well, three years down the road, are we going to need a police vehicle? But you guys don't plan. If you put, I would rather pay twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five than all of a sudden, three years from now, oh, we got a raise at seventy-six thousand because we need a vehicle. And so many things, highway garage, same thing. You don't plan. And so you're cutting this budget so low that I'm afraid you're going to end up going into the reserves because you're going to be over budget at the end. So you need to think of it, the whole picture. It's not just the number, it's what's in that number. You need to be responsible. It's not just to say, oh, we got a two percent raise or increase. When realistically, it maybe should have been three or four percent. I'm not advocating for more. I want the detail to build the budget, not a number to build the budget. Because what's needed is needed. And that's where I'll end.
Anyone want to?
Hi, Jeff Halen. I don't know everyone. I live over on Briggs Lane behind the bookstore. Um, I think it is confusing to me when I hear people who did not support the original budget, did not support the most recent budget, may or may not support the budget that's being proposed today, then talk about the board not planning for the future and making sure that the money is where we need it to be spent efficiently now rather than spend all in one action down the line. The way to make things cheaper later is to pay a little bit more now. That's kind of how finances have worked forever everywhere. That's what it is. So yes, we can all be glad that, that the budget that's going to hopefully come out tonight will be less impactful on all our tax bills. I don't have a ton of money. I'm twenty-seven years old. I'm, I'm doing my best. I have a decent job. I'm not worried about my next meal. But I also don't want to see my taxes skyrocket. But I'm also very proud to live in Brandon and I'm proud to live in a community that takes care of itself. And I want to see it take care of itself. And sometimes that means we have to pay a little bit more. So I hope you all consider that when you're talking about what the board has been doing as far as how they've been planning for the future. And then everyone voted no, so they're working with what they've got. And I commend their efforts. I commend everyone who is speaking up. You can like the board or not, you can like me or not, you can like the budget or not. But everyone's trying their best and I think that's worth considering.
Um, I don't find it just charming and what Jamie had to say, um, and, and I believe Jamie, you're very late when, um, years passed. We had a sinking fund for police cars that we used to contribute to, um, and we used to buy a new cruiser and we have a now sometimes in time frame, um, that hasn't been done for a number of years. Um, and so it kind of had a practice. And so when I'm thinking of it, there's the single thing, mindset change by the select board over those years that they approved a volume for the police cruiser. So I'm, I'm not, we're in the budget for police cruisers this year. There were police cruisers at twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars each. So in the first round of cuts, um, one cruiser was taken out along with all of the paving. We've had a few in the budget for a lot of years. So again, I'm not advocating for one way or another, whether it's appropriation or whatever, but tell you, but ship is sailed. But when you turn and you put in three hundred thousand, a third budget. That will create a, um, it's a percentage increase. Um, so the first go-round of changes, we took out erotic people and we went back to eighty-five thousand in the budget by taking all of these projects out and putting the hundred thousand dollars of re-pollution tax in. And then going forward, um, the other, uh, line item that came out was, uh, two thousand dollars for mail ballots. Um, so there was a, a distinct look by the board, um, at that point. Um, and at, at this, we're around here, we are looking at the, at a, the salary and benefit package and everything that goes with it of an employee. Um, that's not being replaced. And we're, we're, uh, taking the police cruiser out and things to get down to a minus budget point. And, um, I know Neil brought up wanting to hear about the kind of and so I guess I'm trying to answer the questions. I think the select board has gone along by one of the pounds. And we have been put many times and we seem to put many times. And in most of the cases, probably with the exception of the two thousand, it was James and Brian's suggestion to take out the mail ballots. Um, most of the other stuff, all the ideas come from the, the select board. And, and moving forward, we're kind of in a point on January, if we try to sit back and have three, three and we have our physical year and we, um, we June thirtieth. Um, we have to have a budget in place and if they had time for, um, tax bills to go out, et cetera. Um, so, so there's, we, we are, it was a select board kind of up against it. Um, I'll, I'll limit as to what we have to do. If we don't get a budget in time for, you know, the time to mail the tax bills, there would have to be estimated tax bills and maybe and then corrected bills to go away, which would bugger the quote at the town clerk's office to, to do things. Um, I, I believe that, um, select board members have contacted me and we haven't talked about every line in the budget, we've talked about every department in the budget. Um, and the budgets, where the largest public areas were, um, facing in highway and we've made the change in the highway. And if you're coming up with a budget that has a line in the, um, six tenths of a point below and if we cut much deeper, it's going to be a problem. So, um, I just want to clarify that as best I can. So I don't know if anyone else. I, I would ask, is there anyone on the board that wants to stop and go back and go line by line?
Think it would do any harm to do that.
Do you have a suggestion or anything? And at this point, if you'd like to see that?
Same things I've brought up since November.
What's wrong?
We could start by having the police chiefs not drive his car home. That would save ten thousand dollars for ninety-seven hundred and fifty dollars a year. He doesn't have a contract, right? We talked about that here. I brought it up at the first meeting and he said he would leave it here and nothing's happened. I'm aware of. So I first, he's leaving his car here.
Okay.
Is that taking into consideration in the budget?
I, I think that the difficulty in thinking about what we would save in the budget if the chief does not take the car home or the officers do not take the car home, is that the savings that we're contemplating is based on like an IRS mileage reimbursement, which we don't actually pay, right? Um, it, it was, it's a way to quantify how much value there is to an individual getting to use a car that's not their personal car, but it's not going to result in a penny for penny, dollar for dollar reduction in the actual cost of running the police car fleet.
It's going to save miles, excuse me, it's going to save miles on the vehicles.
Yes, that's, that's what I mean. That's, but that's not going to turn into dollars in an operating budget this year.
No, it's going to prolong the life of vehicles.
Which will also not turn into dollars in the operating budget this year. You're totally right. There is value. There will be value saved by none of the officers taking cars home unless they're on call. But those numbers are not going to result in hard cash savings in the budget, even if we say it's happening.
So
they're going to result in not fueling up as much.
That is true, but we've cut that fuel line to within an inch of its life. I mean, we really are, we've, I don't flip it quick here, but the highway department, sorry, the police department vehicle line, we've budgeted at fourteen thousand, we spent twenty-two thousand. So the original proposal was budgeted at twenty-five thousand. We then cut that down and it's at eighteen thousand dollars. That, that budget does not have anywhere else to go. That line.
Okay, I was just bringing that up.
Okay, so I, I just want to summarize. So the concern was the police chief taking his car home or not. We've been assured that that is a change that is already being made as of July first. Is that correct? Okay, so like, that one's good. Okay. I just want to make sure because you've mentioned it before and now we have a resolution on it.
Was the first I'd heard it was actually going to happen.
Okay.
If you want, I got some other things that I've brought up before. And the Go Gov program adds up quite a bit. And if we're talking about cutting, that seems to be a great place to cut that doesn't seem to ever go anywhere after I say it, so.
So for folks who are concerned about things like, we've used the phrase smoke and mirrors. This program will ensure that we know exactly how much everything costs. So to me, I do see, of course it is an expense. It's expensive. That is an expensive program. It's also like sort of par for the course for this type of program. I assume that you didn't look for the most expensive one or something. And it's one that's used in areas around ours with success. And it will ensure that when we think that we have paid X amount for the culverts, we know that we have because we can quantify how many hours did people work, what supplies did we use? Even if we're using a portion of something that we buy in bulk, is that correct? So I, I see that as a protection for people and it's a way to keep us on the up and up and make sure that we don't accidentally make a mistake and think something's costing one amount when it's costing less or more.
It's also, if I could, about the Gov pilot, it's, it's also trying to just recognize that everybody that we deal with, that's a granting agency to us, expects that we have this level of specificity about how much our projects cost in labor, materials and equipment time. We just don't have it. It's designed to recognize the fact that if we subscribe to this, we will have, uh, we will have that information without trying to hire another staff person. We're trying very hard to ask the town staff to do their jobs and to do more jobs with the same amount of time in their schedule without adding another person into the town office or another halftime person or quarter time person. I went to the regional planning, uh, meeting that they facilitated last month and they talked about the legislature's constant practice has been, and they expect it to continue, is they're going to continue to put more and more complex requirements down to the towns and expect that the towns are going to perform if they want to participate in any of these kinds of programs that the state runs, which is how Brandon has financed a lot of its infrastructure and so forth. So it's, it's not a question of are they, are they not working hard enough? The town staff is working hard. This is a way to help them. It's like a force multiplier without bringing another body into the, into the mix.
And some things like me, if I'm not a chief of the long shot, but I'm it can be a project that I don't know the structure with the culvert and and the town and at the end we found out that the grant would have paid for that if we had a Go Gov program that could have allocated the hours that they spent on that project versus other projects. And we just got on recouping serious amount of tone, maybe not the ten thousand dollars for golf class would have been made up in that project. It was like, Mr. Hopkins?
Correct.
So, so Gov, Gov does cost us, but it's a one-time, um, purchase of annual subscription. Okay, they will have the chance of earning more back more in the long run. So, um, I don't know.
I, I like the idea of having the safeguard of knowing those numbers because it helps us avoid conversations where we're going. We think it was this much, et cetera, et cetera. Like especially given the state of how many floods we've had and if FEMA, heaven forbid, were doing that again. And they say, well, how many hours do we reimburse you for? If that's the hoop we have to jump through to get a hundred thousand dollars or whatever it costs, it, it feels like, almost like paying, I mean, it's obviously not insurance, but it feels in the, in the manner of paying for insurance that then we have a, the record that is acceptable. Even if we're thinking, well, we could have kept this on paper ourselves. Well, that's not the rules of the game at the bigger levels of government anymore.
Neil? Um, another one I think you'd like to try, like when we talk line by line, and I will let anyone ask a question if they have one. All the years that I was on the select board and when I was on the budget committee. All the years that I was on the select board and when I was on the budget committee in between, I used to pick on the line number, it was called guardrails. And we used to have a number in there for five thousand or three thousand or four thousand, we get to the end of the year. We didn't spend anything in guardrails and I go, what is this, a broken pad? And we have right now. It wasn't a broken pad, but we didn't spend it because guardrails were getting destroyed. But there's only one company in the state that'll come in and fix them and until they have. Guardrails that need to be fixed, they won't come in. So now this year, really, what money in the program? Um, for you, we've got a couple of guardrail projects happening in the summer, but we're coming for.
Here Thursday.
And and people will spend what we have accumulated over the past time, so that's there. Yes, you gotta, you gotta come up here so people can hear you.
I couldn't hear.
Don't go.
About Newton Road. Okay, so the contractor is back. It was agreed that all of the contractors that did the walkthrough bid said, we cannot pave this road before winter. And that was an understood before we even accepted the bids or opened them. The winning bidder was in that same crowd. They got the road into acceptable condition to the highway foreman to maintain it as a dirt road for the winter. He's now back in town completing the ditches and the culvert cleanouts and the culvert setting and all that. He expects later in May to pave the road and then it will be basically substantially done, there will still be some small work to do. Thank you.
Okay, so we've talked about that. Okay, here, yes.
Hi, I'm Jessica Deuce, um, I live in Brandon. I was wondering about the police dog and how much we're spending for the police officer and the canine unit.
I can answer that one.
So the, there's only one line uh in the budget that's dedicated to the dog expense, which is two thousand dollars a year. And of that, we have at this point spent five hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. The officer's amount is in the general officer's salary line, so he's one of the officers. Um, we do pay him a half an hour a day to take care of the dog. That's a federal requirement that the town was made aware of when, or actually after we started the program um more than a year ago. So it's a little hard for me to quantify, we would still have this officer if he was not the canine officer. He would just be uh just like the rest of the officers doing patrol and so forth. But um the the only specific expense is is basically dog food. Um, he has a good, the police department and the canine officer have a good relationship with a veterinarian. Who provides the uh regular veterinary service to the town as a courtesy.
I I might add that um it's also true that there's a dedicated vehicle um for the canine. Which would not be required if we did not have the canine.
And I'd like to say, can you give us a round number? So. I don't think they're strong touches.
I don't have that number at the top of my head, Mr. Chair, but I can tell you that the chief does come in and speak with me about. I I think the chief and I would meet once every ten days is about what we have been averaging um to check in on things and this comes up. And quite often he will talk about, you know, there was a traffic stop, the officer had reason to believe that there were drugs. We brought the dog to the scene and then the dog, you know, had a hit. And the dog is finding fentanyl and the dog is finding crack cocaine and these things are being taken off the streets. So uh one of the big purposes of having the canine was for missing persons. And he's not been really activated for that purpose yet. He's been activated in a pursuit of an individual, um and but he's been activated in a number of traffic stops.
Okay, can I ask you a question? Um, questions? None heard. Let's surprise you on the board.
That we um take um town manager Hopkins um proposed two and a half percent um budget.
John, so it's actually a proposed budget to raise by point five nine below nine million budget resulting in a two and a percent to be raised by taxes.
Correct.
I like to highlight the point that we're going to change the budget.
We're looking.
Do we need, do we have a second?
Second.
And second discussion from the board. None heard. On the first motion, all in favor of the motion. Um, to go forward with the budget as proposed. And the. See, the point percent of both of the um, the practices, when you say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, no. Um, and. From where?
Uh, somebody just texted me, if you could back off the mic just a little bit, it's getting a little distorted on the cloud. Well, basically.
Um. Okay. Uh, then item six would be to approve the warning. And.
Mr. Chair, so on the warning, what you need to do is select the date for the evening meeting and select the date for the balloting. And then I can, if you will allow me, I can provide you the figures that would be inserted in the language of the questions. Based on your vote that you just took.
Yes.
Okay, so um the the question that's on, it's listed as number one under Town of Brandon Australian ballot, okay? Uh, at the second half of the page. It will say, shall the voters of the town of Brandon authorize total general fund expenditures of? That figure will be three million, three hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-two dollars. I'll repeat that, that's three, three, two, eight, 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 two. For the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget year. Of which the sum five hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred seventy dollars, which was already printed. Is to be raised by non-tax revenue. And this will be the figure to be raised by taxes, two million. Eight hundred four thousand, two hundred twelve dollars, two, eight, zero, four, two, one, twelve. That will be the question before the voters. And then up to you, it would be to determine the dates of the meeting and the balloting.
You have that form that you're putting those numbers in for our signature tonight?
But he has a not, um, I have had to write some stuff on this. If anybody has a blank, we can use a blank and fill it in and have you sign it tonight. Thank you.
And Sue Gooch had to. The uh election date of May twenty-first.
Yes.
And and. I leave this open for discussion, we've we've been having the, we have to have a town meeting to discuss this and have a presentation. It seemed like we had such a small turnout when we did it one day before.
We we, by law, we don't have to do it the day before. I don't know if anyone has any others. On meeting.
I think twenty is probably a.
Yes, go to seven o'clock, not six.
Seven o'clock, okay. I work for everyone here?
Yes.
Thanks for the seven.
Um. Am I right on those dates, Seth, hang on?
Yes. The twenty-first of May is a Tuesday, the twentieth is a Monday.
Okay, um, that works. You need a motion on that, Miss Hopkins, we do. You'd like to make that?
Sure, um, I make a motion that we adopt the FY twenty-four, twenty-five total of three million, three hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-two dollars. Um, to be raised by taxes is two million, eight hundred and four thousand, two hundred and twelve. And um we'll have a um informational meeting on May twentieth at seven P M here at the town hall. And we'll do the revote on May twenty-first at the American Legion.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, sir. Um, I just had a thought um as taking off my town staff hat as a moderator. Um, I didn't know if you wanted to consider the possibility of at least making a video feed available as opposed to having people participate. But at least be able to at least see it. I know a hybrid meeting is tough to to manage with people online, but the very least we could have it videoed and live for Zoom for people to see from home. It's that. Forgot what the other thing was. But it had, but it had something to do with accessibility with with the meeting of and it and uh as early as possible. Uh, posting the uh presentation, folks to peruse as early as possible.
Okay, well, we have the motion in a second. Um, all in favor of the voting on the twenty-first and the town meeting on the twentieth, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no one. Uh additionally on that subject, I would like to say to the select board that um I think it's important for us to um. Um, do all the things that we can do to get people to understand the complexity of the budget. And anyone that has any additional um questions that they can contact us. Um, by phone or by email, I think any board member will be happy to do that. And I'm going to try to put something out on front page forum. That I'm gonna try to look at a schedule that I can be at the coffee shop to answer questions anyone might have. Um, I'm gonna pick a day and say every Wednesday at such and such a time and whatever and be there. I think we need to be available to answer questions as best we can, so I put that out there. Any other activity for the board at this point before executive session?
So I I really hope that people do ask. I really hope that people do ask questions, um, because we really all do have the same goal. And I just, I just hope that people would ask questions before they make guesses that may or may not be right.
Yes, please come up, Billy.
Hello, uh Billy Bullock from Smalley Road. Um, I was a little bit dismayed to see that the low turnout for the last budget vote. Um, Lynn and I, whenever time we went into a store, the hardware store, Hannah Firds. We would always run around and say, don't forget to vote tomorrow. We went out the morning of, don't forget to vote. Um, we actually went into the hardware store, uh Ace over here. And I walked in and in pretty much the top of my lungs, because I saw there was probably about twenty, thirty people in there, I said, don't forget to vote. And I was surprised, everybody turned, we already did. And it was nine, nine o'clock, and I said, good. But there were still only, what, eight hundred and eighty-one people out to vote? And that's, that's kind of bad for something as important as the budget to this town. And I would like to find a way for us to get that word out. A lot of people aren't on front page forum because of what happened, I know a lot of people have said, I'm not going to read this anymore. Um. I don't think radio is the way to go anymore. Um, I don't think I've had the radio on my car turned on since I bought it um several two, three years ago. Um, there is a phone number system that uh we use for road closures and 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 plowing. Is there, can we use that legally? Can we send out a a a phone blast saying, don't forget to vote next week? Don't forget to vote tomorrow, you know, maybe do two of those. Um, maybe down on the corner down here where all the intersections meet, we get some of the big ass ugliest signs we can. And put down there on those three corners, I'll pay for it. But I get to pick the colors and they're gonna be so ugly, you're not gonna miss it. And I would assume and probably eighty percent of the people pass through there at one time or another throughout a week. And maybe that will encourage people to come out to vote. Cause this is a democracy and we all have a say. And if you don't have a say, then zip it. If you don't want to vote, zip it, that's all I have to say, okay?
Our voting turnout dropped, the voter number dropped by five hundred votes from the first of March till the revote. So um clearly uh we, and that this happened in other years when we had failed budgets. That there seems to be a drop off and a little apathy and then it maybe curls up and we need to find a way to reach the people now. To get, get a larger number out. Point well taken.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, board will recess for five minutes for executive session.
Okay, so I I make the motion that we um enter executive session for the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee per one V S A three thirteen, three eight, three possibly. And and not to include the town manager. Microphone.
Uh, discussion, none heard, all in favor of executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no one, we're in executive session.
Back in session, um, and the time is nine twelve P M.
Um, we discussed and agreed that Seth Hopkins Town Manager will have a cost of living increase adjustment to his salary. Um, we just um forgot to do it when we did his evaluation. Um, so we needed to discuss it now and he also will be attending a town manager training program. Over the next two years.
Right.
Police cruiser and all, favorite?
Aye.
Aye. Let me just.